Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Wadsworth City School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, April 14th, 2025. If you'll please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll call? Mr. Beeman?
Julie Beatty.
Here.
Amanda Gordon.
Here.
Jill Stevens.
Here.
Tim Beck.
Here.
Connor Gogler.
Here.
And we'll note that Gary McComas has asked.
Okay. And in your packet of materials for the meeting, you received the minutes. I'd like to get a motion for approval and signing of the minutes. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Beeman.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to students' staff recognition. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Gordon. At this time, I'll ask for our Students of the Month and Principals to please make their way backstage. For once we finish with the students' recognition, we'll reconvene on stage for the discussion items, presentations, and updates.
Good evening, Wadsworth families. My name is Sanana Kelly, and I am the principal at Franklin Elementary School, and we are so proud to announce that Ridley Stewart has been selected as April's Board of Education Student of the Month. Ridley leads with her heart, lifts up those around her, and brings out the best in everyone she meets, whether she's solving problems with creativity or encouraging a classmate with kindness. Ridley's confidence and positivity leave a lasting impact. As our class president, voted on by all her peers, she's shown what true leadership looks like. She is thoughtful, dedicated, and inspiring. Ridley makes Franklin a better place simply by being herself, and while we're incredibly proud of her, we will miss her deeply when she moves on from Franklin next year. There's no doubt she'll continue to lead and shine wherever she goes. Ridley thinks Franklin is a really nice place to be. Everyone always loves her and welcomes all students. Her favorite subjects are physical education, art, and language arts. They are the subjects that allow her to have fun while still using her brain to solve things, work hard, and persevere. One of her favorite memories at Franklin is when she came to Franklin in first grade and everyone made her feel like she belonged. She also loved this year in fourth grade when she broke her arm two times and everyone got together to help her. When she grows up, Ridley wants to be a teacher or an orthopedic surgeon. She would love to help kids thrive and do their best. If she becomes a surgeon, it's because she knows what it feels like to break bones, and she wants people to feel better. Outside of school, Ridley loves horseback riding and hanging out with her family. She loves going to the park with her family and playing board games. When asked who Ridley admires, she says she looks up to her mother the most. Her mom is always there for her, takes off of work to help the family when they need something, and Ridley never has to worry because she knows her mom will always be there to lift her up. Here's what Ridley's teachers have to say about her. Ridley is a wonderful student who brings joy to our classroom every day. She has a unique ability to find creative solutions to problems and always approaches challenges with a positive attitude. Ridley consistently demonstrates hard work, kindness, and leadership. She is a natural leader who inspires those around her and is always willing to lend a helping hand and encourage her classmates. She strives to do her best and helps others do the same. Her positive attitude and helpful nature make her a valuable member of our class, and we are so proud of our class president, Ridley Stewart. Please join us in congratulating Ridley Stewart on this well-deserved honor.
I'm Joe Schala, principal at Aishem Elementary, and we are proud to recognize Carter Pekovic as this month's student of the month, Board Student of the Month. Carter is a dedicated student, an enthusiastic athlete, and a positive role model in our school community. Carter's favorite subject is phys ed, where he enjoys running around and playing all kinds of sports. Outside of school, he can often be found playing basketball, soccer, or spending time with his family, three of his favorite things. This year, Carter is especially proud of several big accomplishments: making his AAU basketball team, doing well on our school volleyball tournament, and earning the title of Board Student of the Month, a huge achievement. In class, Carter is excited about one of the most unique and fun experiences this year: hatching ducks, which I think is going well so far. Here, there we go. Here's what his teachers had to say. We are pleased to recognize Carter as our fourth grade student of the month. Carter consistently demonstrates exceptional behavior and a positive attitude, but what truly sets him apart is his outstanding cooperation. Whether working with peers or helping his teachers, Carter's willingness to collaborate and support others make him a role model for his classmates. His respectful and helpful nature contributes to a positive classroom environment, and we are proud to have him as part of our school community. Congratulations. Carter also serves as a member of our Student Council, which helps make our school an even better place. When asked about being Student of the Month, what being Student of the Month means to him, Carter said, "It means I've been a good role model, and I'm helping make Aishem Elementary a better place." I love that answer. He looks up to his mom and dad, and the way, when I asked him why, it was very, very, very sweet what he said. They support him in all that he does, and all of his accomplishments are because of them. His dream job: being an NBA player. And with his drive and talent, everything is possible. One of Carter's favorite memories in school was making his first two friends, Logan and Joseph, back in first grade at Aishem, a memory he'll never forget. When asked what advice he'd give to younger students and to who want to be Student of the Month, Carter offered this wise advice: Be a good person, don't tell lies, do what you can do, and control yourself. I love all that advice. Carter, thank you for being a kind, responsible, and inspiring student. We are lucky to have you at Aishem. Congratulations.
My name is Maria Civio, proud fourth grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary. It is my pleasure to introduce Landon Letner, Lincoln's January Board Student of the Month. Landon is the son of Curtis and Megan and sibling to older sisters Kaylin and Emily. He also has a dog named Daisy. Here is why Mrs. Barker and I nominated Landon for Board Student of the Month. Landon is an intelligent student who always brings a smile to class. He adds brilliant ideas to class discussions and spreads joy with his humor. Landon stands out for his respect towards all his peers and teachers, creating a welcoming and inclusive environment in our classrooms. Landon's kindness and ability to work well with others make him a great friend and a valuable team member. Landon, a bright and enthusiastic fourth grader, possesses a remarkable passion for learning and diverse interests. He excels in math, eagerly embracing challenges and demonstrating strong mental math skills to solve equations quickly. Outside of school, Landon enjoys an active lifestyle, playing soccer, video games, and watching engaging YouTube videos. A pianist of five years, Landon recently shared his musical talents with Lincoln staff and students at The Variety Show. Spicy buffalo chicken wings are his favorite food, followed by chocolate brownies with ice cream for dessert. Looking towards the future, Landon dreams of a career as a professional soccer or basketball player alongside potentially becoming an engineer like his father with an open mind about the specific field. One of Landon's hidden talents is his exceptional skill in the math game 24, which he describes as creating equations to reach the number 24 using the given digits. He recently competed in a tournament against other schools. A cherished memory from his time at Lincoln is learning about global cultures and holiday traditions in second grade with Mrs. Reeves. He fondly recalls making potato pancakes and the imaginative play of traveling to different countries with their homemade passports. Landon hopes to travel to China someday, drawn to its culture, architecture, and cuisine. As Landon prepares for fifth grade at CIS, he will miss his wonderful Lincoln teachers. His advice to fellow Lincoln Grizzlies is simply, "Just be yourself, ask questions, and you'll always find someone to help or play with you at recess. Just introduce yourself." Landon attributes his success to three key principles: Focus on completing your work, listen attentively, especially to teachers, and be kind to everyone, even when it's challenging. Landon, we are confident you will continue to achieve great things. Remember, you are smarter than you think, braver than you seem, stronger than you feel, and you can do hard things. Please join me in congratulating Landon Letner.
My name is Dave Ryder, and I'm the principal at Overlook Elementary. It is with great pride that we recognize Madeline Redkey as the Overlook Elementary Board Student of the Month. Maddie has demonstrated exceptional leadership qualities and a commitment to helping others throughout her fourth grade year. Her teachers, Mrs. Pecknick and Mrs. Bennet, commend her by stating, "Maddie continues to shine as an outstanding fourth grade leader. She is constantly searching for ways to help others." Maddie volunteered to be a preschool helper this year and continues to be one of our fourth grade announcers in the morning on announcements. Maddie is not one to back down from a challenge. She is methodical in her work and pays close attention to every detail. She participates and asks questions to guarantee she has a solid understanding of the content. We are so proud of her hard work and leadership during her fourth grade year. Maddie's favorite subjects are math, reading, and writing. With aspirations to become a nurse, a teacher, or an artist, Maddie shows passion for learning and a desire to make a positive impact on this world. Her advice to future fourth graders is both inspiring and wise. She says, "Try your best and don't give up, and don't be afraid to do hard things." This determination reflects her character and also her work ethic. In her leisure time, Maddie enjoys golfing, riding her bike, and sketching. One of her favorite vacation destinations is Oak Island, North Carolina, where she loves playing in the ocean and boogie boarding. Maddie, we are so proud of you. Your hard work, leadership, enthusiasm for learning make you a true role model for your peers. Congratulations to Maddie Redkey, the Overlook April Board Student of the Month.
I'm Carrie Hampshire, the principal at Valley View Elementary, and we are very excited and honored to have the opportunity to nominate Scarlett Fraze as our Student of the Month. Scarlett, who is accompanied here this evening by her parents, Adam and Nicole, is an incredible fourth grader, and she demonstrates how awesome she is every day at Valley View. She generously gives of her time and talents, volunteering to participate in our Student Council, our morning announcements crew, and our safety patrol. Her work in these groups helps support all of our Valley View students and is a perfect example of her caring and giving spirit. She is an exceptional student academically, excelling in all subjects, with her favorite being reading. She loves a good book, and she also enjoys drawing. I just asked her backstage what she wants to do when she grows up, and she wants to be an art teacher, so maybe one day she'll be back here at Wadsworth teaching students. Scarlett's thoughtful demeanor and strong thinking skills make her a wonderful partner and collaborator in our classrooms. She strives daily to support others while thinking and learning along the way. She is a kind friend to all and leads by example. She is trustworthy. You can count on Scarlett to be an exemplary role model for all of our Valley View values of being kind, safe, and responsible. She would like to encourage all students to be engaged in at least one club at their school when you're old enough. She has chosen chess club and has come to really enjoy the game and all of the other students who participate. We are going to miss her bright smile at Valley View when she heads on to CIS next year. Well, W-I-S. Scarlett said that she is very excited to meet her new teachers and be in the new building. Scarlett, keep shining your bright light to all that you come in contact with because you truly are a Valley View star. Congratulations.
Hello and good evening, Board of Education and Wadsworth community. I'm Brandon Cobb, principal of Central Intermediate School. Tonight, I'm here to celebrate our April Board Student of the Month, Ally Gasser. Ally is the daughter of Evan and Amanda Gasser, and she also has sisters Kensley, Neva, and brother Duke. Ally is a fifth grader, was nominated by her teachers, Mr. Shanker, Mrs. Curvin, and Mrs. Bischoff. Here's what her teachers had to say. Mr. Shanker, Mrs. Curvin, and Mrs. Bischoff are pleased to nominate Ally Gasser as April Board Student of the Month. Ally is an outstanding student who consistently demonstrates academic excellence and leadership. In the classroom, she's earned straight A's and made the excellence roll all year. Ally has participated in Team Leadership League reward each grading period because of her outstanding behavior and responsibility. Ally participates in class discussions, stays on task, and sets a great example for her peers. She's a member of the CIS choir and band, where she is learning to play the flute. Ally is a genuine role model for her classmates, showing that kindness and hard work can lead to success. Outside of the classroom, Ally plays the piano, enjoys reading chapter books, being outside, and everything water. Water skiing, wakeboarding, kneeboarding, and tubing. I learned that she started skiing at two years old, two or three years old. She also loves spending time with her friends and family, especially her cousins. We're so happy to have Ally in class this year and know she will be successful in the future. Please help me congratulate CIS April Board Student of the Month, Ally Gasser.
Good evening. My name is Chris Roberts, principal at Wadsworth Middle School, and it is my pleasure to introduce our April Wadsworth Middle School Student of the Month, Mr. Leo Smith. Leo is a student who truly models dedication, perseverance, and a positive outlook on both academics and life. His favorite subjects are mathematics and social studies, and he appreciates the logical challenges of solving math problems because he knows it will serve him well in the future. His love for history stems from his curiosity and general appreciation for learning about the past. One of Leo's proudest academic moments was his recent argumentative essay in language arts. He worked incredibly hard on this assignment, including numerous drafts and revisions that led up to his final paper. While it was a lot of work, earning an A on the assignment made all of that effort worthwhile. This is just one example of Leo's commitment to doing his best in all that he does. When asked what has contributed most to his success at Wadsworth Middle School, Leo was quick to credit his mom. She has always been there to provide support and encouragement, helping him stay motivated and focused. He also believes in the power of a positive mindset. He trusts that everything happens for a reason, and he strives to find good in every situation. Outside of the classroom, Leo is a dedicated athlete. He plays football as wide receiver and corner, and competes for the Wadsworth Middle School track team as a distance runner. In fact, a little over an hour ago, he just set his personal best time in the mile. While he's not on the field, he enjoys spending time with his dog, Winnie, often taking long walks together. Leo is also guided by a strong sense of faith, which includes how he approaches challenges and setbacks. His advice to his peers is simple but powerful: Put in the work, and good things will happen. Even when the path isn't clear or things do not go as planned, he believes in staying the course and following his dreams. As he looks ahead to the rest of the school year, Leo is focused on finishing strong. He feels this will best equip him to do his best on upcoming end-of-the-year tests and prepare him for a successful transition to Wadsworth High School. With his determination and work ethic, there is no doubt that he will continue to achieve great things. Congratulations, Leo, on this well-deserved recognition as Wadsworth Middle School's April Student of the Month.
My name is Vincent Suber, and I'm the proud principal of Wadsworth High School, and we proudly present Kiara Boswell as February Career Tech Student of the Month. Kiara is the daughter of Amy Mentor. Kiara enjoys reading, and she especially enjoys action and mystery books. Her favorite books are The Hunger Games, and she has read each book several times. She also enjoys music of all genres with her favorite artists. Kiara has participated in Big Brother and Big Sister, as well as being very involved in her COMPAP program. In the medical technology program here at Wadsworth High School, she has learned skills such as recording vital signs, moving and transferring patients, observing infection control, providing personal hygiene, understanding basic medical terminology, ambulating patients, and administering CPR first aid. She has earned these certifications, including, that include her 10-hour OSHA, first aid, stop the bleed, basic life support, and she is currently completing her phlebotomy technician and patient care technician certifications. Kiara has had a positive impact on Wadsworth High School and its COMPAP program. Kiara's medical technology teacher, Mrs. Amanda Reed, had this to say about her. When asked to recommend a Career Tech Student of the Month, Kiara immediately came to mind. She is not only at the top of her class academically, but she stands out both in attitude and effort. Kiara always has a positive attitude and can make me smile with her sense of humor, even on the worst day. She takes pride in her work and always puts first her best effort. She always steps up whenever I need anything, whether it's assembling a new piece of equipment or volunteering her time to attend a COMPAP event and represent our program, something she does very well, and she does it with pride. Recently, Kiara represented our program in the Northeast Ohio Regional Skills USA competition for medical terminology and ranked in the top 10 of all competitors. She embraced the opportunity to do something new and put a lot of work in to prepare. Students like Kiara remind me why I became a teacher and make every day worth it. She embraces the opportunity to learn and rarely complains. I look forward to watching her succeed in anything she sets her mind to. After graduating, Kiara plans to attend Kent State University and major in biology, and she plans to become an anesthesiologist assistant. Please join me in congratulating Kiara Boswell. We would also like to present Lauren Decker as April's Career Tech Student of the Month. Lauren is the daughter of Lynn and Chris Decker. Lauren enjoys spending time with her family, whether it's going out or staying in. She also likes to spend time with her older brother Eric when he is home from college. They like to go out for ice cream, just the two of them, at least once while he is at home. Lauren is an exceptional student at Wadsworth High School, excelling in both academics and athletics. She has completed CCP courses in government and English. She has already obtained certifications in first aid and CPR and is currently working toward being a state-tested nursing aide in the COMPAP program by Barberman High School. As a peer mentor and a member of the National Technical Honor Society, Lauren demonstrates leadership. In sports, she plays varsity volleyball and basketball, receiving several accolades, second-team All-Ohio in the Medina County Gazette MVP for volleyball, as well as first team honors in the Suburban League, All-District, and All Coaches Association for basketball. Lauren has been involved in all these activities in her COMPAP program, all while maintaining a 3.9 grade point average. Lauren has also had a positive impact on Wadsworth High School and its COMPAP program. Lauren's coach, Mr. Andrew Boots, had this to say about Lauren. Lauren is an all-time favorite of mine, not because she's a great player for our team, which she certainly is, but for what she represents as a Wadsworth Grizzly. She is driven, conscientious, kind, respectful, goal-oriented, and a leader. She is able to achieve greatness in athletics, as well as the classroom and in our community due to her pursuit of excellence. Lauren sets the bar very high for herself in all endeavors, which in turn raises the level of those around her. She is the ultimate champion. After graduating, Lauren plans to attend Division I of Robert Moore University, where she will play volleyball and pursue a degree in nursing. Please join me in congratulating Lauren Decker. And finally, we are proud to present Matthew Reed as the April Student of the Month. Matthew is the son of Peter and Sandy Reed. He enjoys watching movies and relaxing in the hot tub with his parents and siblings, Andrew and Lauren. Matthew is an outstanding senior at Wadsworth High School, recognized for his leadership and his musical talent. He serves as the marching band section leader, is a member of the jazz band, and holds the first chair position in the wind ensemble. As a member of the National Honor Society and president of the Tri-M Music Honor Society, he exemplifies academic excellence and passion for music. Additionally, Matthew is the head technician for all of the fine arts performances in our high school. Matthew is dedicated to his academics because he challenges himself with very hard coursework. This year, he has taken Advanced Placement Environmental Science and Advanced Placement Computer Science. Throughout his career, he's taken a total of four AP classes while actively participating in all those activities and maintaining a 4.18 grade point average, which is a testament to his hard work. One of Matthew's teachers, Mrs. Dana Hyer, had this to say. Matthew is an exceptionally talented saxophone player, whose musical abilities have consistently oppressed both his fellow students and faculty alike. His performances exhibit not just technical skill, but an emotional depth that resonates with audiences showcasing his passion for music. Beyond his musical talent, Matthew has emerged as a leader within our band program. He takes the initiative to mentor younger students, helping them develop their skills. His ability to foster a supportive environment has significantly contributed to the cohesion and morale of our band. After graduating high school, Matthew plans to go to the Ohio State University to study electrical and computer engineering. Please join me in congratulating Matthew Reed.
Congratulations again to all of our Students of the Month, family, friends, others. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you're here just for the Student of the Month presentation, while our board will be moving forward with the business portion of their meeting, and you're more than welcome to stay, you're also free to go at this time.
Okay, always an enjoyable part of our meeting for sure. We will continue with the meeting and go into administrative discussion items and updates. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, President Gordon. Our first item tonight is really a discussion, more of an update, on the state budget bill and implications that where that ends up could have financial forecasts and a couple comments on where we're at with staffing for the upcoming school year. I'll turn this over to our treasurer, Mr. Beeman, to start.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. So it's been quite a chaotic last couple weeks. News that we keep getting out of Columbus that we wanted to share with the Board of Education and our community tonight. So for those that aren't familiar, the budget process started with the governor's budget that was proposed back in January. House Bill 96 was then voted out of the House last week and the Senate. House Bill 96 was then voted out of the House last week, and the Senate is now deliberating on that. A few of the concerns that the education community has with the most recent version of the budget, starting at the top, and what's on your screen there and in front of you, the board members highlighted there, is first, while they say that the Fair School Funding Plan is still in place and is still being phased in, they further go on to say that prohibits the Department of Workforce from generally making payments under the public school finance system. So what they're in essence saying there is, while they haven't taken the Fair School Funding Plan out of the bill, they are doing, they are not going to implement it during these next two years. So similar to what we saw a number of years ago under, I believe it was the Kasich administration, when we had the bridge formula, as they're saying, we've got this formula here that we've had, and we think we should have something in the future, so in the meantime, we're just going to basically hold everybody harmless and fund them at their current levels. So that is an improvement over what the governor's budget had us losing, about $2.5 million. So that part of the transition is an improvement as far as our funding currently, but there's some other language in the bill that has us concerned. Probably the biggest one is putting a limit of 30% on our carryover cash flow. The reason that's concerning is with the way that schools are funded in the state of Ohio, our revenue sources, as you've heard me say over and over and over, are relatively flat. House Bill 920 doesn't allow our revenue from local property tax levies to grow, and obviously, from what I just shared with you, our state funding remains relatively flat from year to year, especially for us right now as a declining, a district with declining enrollment. We've been on the guarantee for a number of years, meaning that our revenue is relatively flat. So if our cost increased over year over year and our revenue is flat, obviously, we need to build up reserves to help us when we start deficit spending. The way that schools do that, they pass levies. We passed a levy in 2021 that generated more money than we needed for the first couple of years. We build up reserves, and then the lines intersect, so to speak, where our revenues are less than our expenditures, and that happened to us last year and continues into this year and to our projected future. So what does that mean? We start spending down those reserves. So by eliminating our reserves, us and every other school district in the state of Ohio to 30%, it's not going to allow you to build up those reserves and then spend them down. What does that mean? It means instead of being on the ballot every four, five, six, seven years for levies, school districts are going to have to be on the ballot every year or two years at a best. Now, those levy requests may be for less millage, it may be lower dollar amounts, but if we can't build up reserves to carry us through that time when our revenues are flat, it just means that we're going to need a little bit of a bump up each year because our costs increase each year. So your only way to do that would be to go back to the ballot for small, one, two-mill levies every year. Another thing that they did in the current version that came out of the House is they changed the five-year forecast to a three-year forecast. Well, I will be the first to admit, that fourth and fifth year are relatively difficult to project, especially since we have three biennial budgets in there, we might have multiple teacher and support staff contracts in there. Those years are a little bit difficult to project. The interesting thing about this right now, though, and why I believe and many believe that they have cut off the fourth and fifth year of the forecast, is if we aren't allowed to have adequate reserves, every school district in the state of Ohio is going to show a deficit balance in year four and five. So instead of dealing with showing enough negative balance in those years, they just eliminate them. So out of sight, out of mind, let's stick our heads in the sand and pretend like it doesn't exist. So those are the three big items that are coming out of the budget. The Fair School Funding Plan not being implemented, the reserves, and then the change in the five-year forecast to a three-year forecast. Certainly a lot more to come on this. Like I said, it's in the Senate now, and we'll see where that goes. The governor can do his line item vetos if he so chooses, but that's kind of where we stand right now, and just a lot of concern in the education, in public education community related to what the House and the Speaker of the House, Huffman, are putting in front of us right now.
Thank you. Any questions?
How does changing, if were to be implemented, from a five-year forecast to a three-year forecast, would that change our strategic planning from, we do five years of strategic planning, would we have to be condensing it to a three-year strategic plan?
So my initial thoughts on that is, I'm probably still going to do a five-year forecast. While you may technically only adopt a three-year forecast, and that's what's going to be out there as far as what we have to do by law, we're still going to need to be looking further into the future. Because right now, like if you look at the first three-year forecast, it's going to look like we're okay, we're deficit spending, but we're showing a positive balance. But when you look at years four and five right now, those balances are negative. And while I can't tell you that those balances being the dollar amount, how much they're negative is correct, things are going to change between now and then. What I can tell you is, unless we do something dramatically different, those numbers are going to stay negative into years four and five. So I think we need to look out past years three, no matter what, even though the legislature and the laws are only going to require you to adopt a three-year forecast. You know, I would preface when I was probably doing my presentation to you that, here's what you're adopting, here's what it looks like, but looking beyond that, we need to be at least aware of that, and I think that would play into what we do as far as from a capital campaign with Dr. Hill and the strategic planning. I want to add to that.
Yeah, just a quick comment in what Doug just said. When he talks about year in five and saying that those numbers may not be accurate, it's because he's trying to look out and project two state budgets away and other things. For the community that may have an interest in the current five-year forecast, that can be found on our district website, along with very detailed listing of executive summary that shows all of the assumptions that go into that. But obviously, the further we get out from where we currently are, the more that that's based on projections based off of hard point data from the past and then projections. I would just echo what he said about the strategic plan. I don't think that that, I think from the funding standpoint of a strategic plan, we have to look, but usually when we're looking at the strategic plan from a funding standpoint, we're looking more at sales tax and dollars with how we're allocating those to be able to move the district forward in ways that you choose to include in the strategic plan. Sometimes there's implications there that have to do with the general operating that we would have to keep in mind, but I wouldn't suggest changing how long we make our strategic plan for the next one. In relation to this budget and staffing and other things, you know, we've been slowly working through an attrition process as we've been able to over the years. Our enrollment has been declining, like most school districts in the state of Ohio. I think there's only one in our county, Highland, that has actually shown growth, and they're in the minority across the state when it comes to these enrollment trends. For the upcoming year, we are kind of accelerating what was built into the five-year forecast, and we're looking to, through attrition, in ways that still align with the goals that you have set for programming and other things for kids, class sizes, et cetera. I think we're going to end up somewhere around nine or 10 teaching positions that will not be filled as we move forward. We're going to need to have a continual eye and voice where we can on what's happening at the state level with the budget, because that does have a big impact on us, and then local decisions that will have to be made here as a result. Our understanding is that the budget has to be in place, signed into law by the governor by July 1st, absent any other short-term fix that gets passed through law. And so the Senate is on a timeline now, from our understanding, somewhere in mid-June to pass their version of the budget bill, which then, unless they agree with everything that the House has put in, will go to a conference committee that's composed of people from the House and the Senate, and then that final version will go to the governor. The governor has the ability and has used it in the past to line item veto certain items that are in there. So once we have a better direction of where things are going with this, obviously, there's going to be a need for a lot of discussion on where that puts us then with our financial forecast, whether it's three years out, five years out, or whatever period of time that we're looking at. So we'll continue to provide updates along the way, and we'll continue to work with our professional organizations and other organizations that we collectively belong to as a school district, to continue to advocate for public school funding and other policy-related issues that impact us, that are under current consideration with the budget, in the budget. Any other questions?
Yes.
In May, I'm obviously required to bring a five-year forecast in front of you. We're required to do that in November and May, so we will have an updated five-year forecast. Hopefully, we'll have a little bit better understanding of where we are, but it would be hard to probably have a final number as far as what our state aid is going to look like, but we'll do that in May, and if we have to update it soon after, if it's greatly different, we can, we don't have to wait till November to update the forecast either if it's going to be much different. But we will be able to implement everything that we're doing on the expenditure side because we know exactly what we're, those reductions that Dr. Hill just spoke about and everything else that's related to our funding for our expenditures for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item here is to schedule a date for the information session for potential Board of Education members. So back in 2015, the Board of Education approved a handbook. It kind of details out a lot of roles, responsibilities, and other things. One of the things that was included in there was the offering of an information session on what it means to be a board member and an opportunity for those in the community that are interested in potentially running for office to be able to participate, ask questions, et cetera. That meeting, I believe in the handbook, is supposed to happen in April of years that there is an election taking place, which would be this November. We've had the meeting, though, as late as early May. And so the handbook talks about two members. Typically, those are members who are not in an election year for their current seat. I think we have had at least one time during that period of time where somebody had decided not to run that was also part of the meeting for the community. So we're just looking to get a date on the calendar so that we can promote that opportunity for the community.
Sure. I will toss out April 29th, and I'd be happy to do it.
Okay. Are you, 6:00 PM?
Sure.
And we'll do it at the Charles Parsons Administration Building? Okay, very good. We will get you the past presentation that's been used, and we'll get communication out on this. Thank you. The next item here for discussion is the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding and Vouchers Hurt Ohio. So there's an organization that's been around for a number of years called the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding. In the last, I think, three years, there's, I'm not exactly sure how they're tied together, but an off-branch of that, Vouchers Hurt Ohio, came into existence. They're challenging the constitutionality of the Ed Choice voucher program in our state in court. We received a communication recently from Eric Brown, the chair of the steering committee for Vouchers Hurt Ohio, and William Phyllis, the executive director for the coalition, asking if our district would consider, again, this isn't the first time that we've received such a request, consider including ourselves in this process. I believe that they said they now have over 300 boards of education that have supported the litigation effort for one or more years. So the cost for this is $2 per student. It's all based on student enrollment, so for us, that would be roughly $8,000, and that's for a school year. And then if you choose, it's by year, you make a choice of whether you would like to or not. As I mentioned, we have had this request even before Vouchers Hurt Ohio, the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding have asked year in and year out for consideration, and there's been decisions made to not move forward with joining those. I was asked to put this on tonight's agenda as a discussion point, and trying to look, we were asked for some information. The Ed Choice Scholarship Program continues to expand. There's expansion components that are in the current budget bill that are being considered. For us, we're not, we can't tell you for sure how Ed Choice impacts Wadsworth City Schools, because when the old funding formula, transition formula went away to this fair school funding, the reports that we used to receive previous would show the number of students that were on an Ed Choice Scholarship from our school district. When the fair school funding started, community schools, Ed Choice, all of that stuff no longer showed up because there's direct funding. So the best that I can do to tell you is, the last year we were able to see the number on the said report was 2021, and we had zero recipients of Ed Choice Scholarships. When we look at, mentioned earlier, declining enrollment, we took a look recently and I shared with you in an update, our enrollment in like five-year intervals, starting in 2009, 10. And when we looked at that, chartered non-public schools, so that's the legal term for basically private or religious schools, where these Ed Choice vouchers would be used. We do not know how many students actually of ours go to one of those schools. The best that we're able to do is take a look and see how many students were with us and withdrew mid-school year to go to a chartered non-public school. So if we're just looking at this school year, that number is 19. That does not mean every one of those 19 is receiving an Ed Choice Scholarship. We can't speak to that. So I think that, the other thing I would mention to you, and I haven't heard anything about this part of it a couple of years, but one of the things that happened when this lawsuit was first filed, or within the first year, the auditor of state was asking school districts to complete a survey about whether your district was actually part of the coalition that was initiating the lawsuit, because they were investigating whether public funding from schools was permitted for this type of a purpose. I haven't, there's a lot of, a lot of things on that topic. I do not know the end result. That was about two years ago, that all of that stuff was happening, and colleagues of mine were speaking about it. So at this time, with that information that I was asked to gather and provide for the discussion, I'll turn it over to you. Happy to answer any questions or anything. We're just looking for direction from you on how you'd like to proceed.
Okay, comments?
Yeah, I feel like this is a worthy conversation. It's just yet another complicated piece of our education issues here in the state. It should be noted that last year, just shy of $1 billion, that's with a B, $1 billion in private school vouchers were given out from the state. Some might agree with that, some might disagree. I do think it's important to stand in solidarity with the schools that have already signed on to this, but having said that, I also recognize that it seems to me that based upon the recent budget that Doug just spoke of, there are Ed Choice expansions already in that budget. So people at the State House seem determined to continue to give taxpayer So people at the State House seem determined to continue to give taxpayer money to private and charter schools. And again, I recognize people may have varying opinions on that, but I don't know if that's a battle that we're going to be able to win. So that's just my two cents.
I don't think I can say that any better than Tim just did, so thank you. And while public education is definitely under attack, I, I do like that we're not as impacted by us, by it and keeping things at a local control, local issue. I would just prefer not to spend any of our funds.
Yeah, and I, I agree certainly with Tim and Jill. I mean, yeah, public education is, attack is not the right word. It's worse than attack, but the appropriate word. But I, I'm just astounded by the amount of money that's being funneled from public education into private education. And like we've all just stated, you know, in the financial forecast in the future, I don't know that it's the right time to be spending $8,000 for this. However, I guess, in lieu of that, I just will instruct maybe all of us, suggest all of us and certainly our citizens to, you know, please continue reaching out to your, your senators and your representatives and the governor to tell them that we're not happy about this and that how important public education is to all of us. Whether or not our district is profoundly affected by it, I, I do want to stand in solidarity too with our, with our, the other districts that are really hurting from losing the amount of funding because of vouchers. So perhaps in the future, depending on where our financial status is, we, we take a look at it.
Okay, and I, I don't think this is the right time. I don't think this particular case is the right forum. I think we continue to, as I think some of the rest of you have said, we continue to engage with our legislators because I think that's where we can make the, the biggest impact. And whether Ed Choice is available or not, you know, it comes down to the funding, and we want to make sure that we advocate for, for us and for our district and make sure that we're getting every dollar that, that we can use for, for public education. Again, I, I don't, I don't think it's the time to be spending $8,000. I think we've got plenty of other things. I'm sure Doug could come up with the list right now and a number of things that we could spend $8,000 on that impact our, our kids in, in this district. And we do represent an entire district, and there are those that do favor Ed Choice as well, so, you know, I, I just don't know that we should be using their tax money to oppose this in a court case at this point, so. And I will also say, just from the legal aspect, it's, it's at the Court of Common Pleas. They've said on their website, they're digging into, you know, and they foresee years and years of legisla, or litigation on this. So, you know, Common Pleas level is just the first level of many, so there, you know, there may be, there may be something later that, that makes sense, but I, I'd just like to see us focus on our district and advocating for, advocating for our needs at this point, so.
Okay, thank you. A couple other notes. On the detail sheet with the agenda, we have a timeframe laid out, timeline for our upcoming strategic planning process. There's a link for a survey that we will also promote in a different way to highlight to the community as well. But that link is live, and if anyone is interested in commenting on our current strategic plan and suggesting areas of focus for the future as the board works through the process, we would appreciate your input. Fine Arts Festival. Just a reminder, artwork, students, kindergarten through 12th grade will be on display Friday, May 2nd, 4:00 to 9:00 PM, and Saturday, May 3rd, 10:00 to 4:00 PM. That is a change that we're trying this year. Typically, it's a Saturday, Sunday. We are moving it to Friday, Saturday, and all fourth-grade students in the district will be visiting the middle school during the day on Friday to be able to see artwork. We will also still have student performances that are also part of the Fine Arts Fest over those days as well. A reminder that there is a special board meeting this Thursday, beginning at 9:00 AM here at the high school. It'll begin with a, a brief executive session, and then, starting at 9:30, we'll have a tour of the high school. There may be some voting items. We're still putting together that purpose statement that'll go out no later than sometime on Wednesday, Wednesday morning, that'll detail anything that you're being asked to potentially vote on. That meeting will conclude around noon at Copley Fair Lawn High School. After we tour the high school here, at your request, we'll tour the four cities' compact programs that our students attend at Copley and finish with the culinary program and the bistro. Lastly, just want to mention, and it's written about in great detail on the detail sheet, but we are engaging in a process started last Friday when we put out the public notice of retire rehire for one of our teachers when somebody is retiring and then is going to be hired back into the same type of role or recommended to you to be rehired, in this case, another teaching position. We're required to put out a notice 60 days prior to, at least 60 days prior to you taking action. We're requ, you're required to have a meeting where that is discussed, no, between 15 and 30 days before you take action. That'll be your May board meeting. And then you'll be asked at your June board meeting to officially consider a recommendation to rehire Mr. Andy Booth, teacher here at Wattsworth High School. Again, I want to also mention that there is a memorandum of understanding with our teacher union that details how that process works, cost savings that are in place, other things for the district when we engage in that type of situation. I think that that is all that I have for you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be moving into the public participation part of the meeting. We believe that there may be folks that want to address this tonight, so before we start, I just wanted to go over a couple of the, the rules and procedures that we have set out for, for public participation. You'll need to come down here, use the microphone, state your name, your address, and any group you're affiliated with. You'll then be given three minutes to address, address your concern. You need to address the, address me with respect to whatever your concerns are. You don't, we don't ask individual board members questions and whatnot. And we will just ask for, you know, decorum to, to be observed, and hopefully, we can hear from you and, and make this constructive. So with that, if we have anybody that would like to address the board, I'd ask you to raise your hand, and I can call on you, and you can come up one by one. Okay, lady down here.
Hi, I'm Rachel Endermule. My address is 10338 Golden Ridge Drive, Wattsworth, Ohio. And so I'm an eighth-grade parent, so this is more of a general statement, and I don't know what you can and can't state. I don't have a personal relationship with Coach Peggy, nor does my daughter. However, I know that there's, she was let go. We have been informed that it's a private matter. We don't have any information as to why. To my understanding, I don't think that Peggy even knows why. It, it's alarming for myself for several reasons. I have a child on an IEP with low confidence, and I know that she was looking forward to having Peggy as her coach to help mentor her. She's indecisive on if she even wants to try out. We don't know the future of the high school cheer squad at this point in time. I also understand there are things you can't say, but any information you can give us, and is this even open for discussion, or are we just wasting air, you know, expressing our concern? So I don't know what you can and can't say.
Thank you. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Janine Antolczuk, 216 Hillsdale Court, Wattsworth, Ohio. I just want to say that I am not a public speaker. I feel very uncomfortable and nervous being up here, but when I feel very strongly about something, I feel like I need to express it. I stay out of the drama and, and whatnot, so for me to be up here, it is very important to me. I am the mother of a freshman who goes to Wattsworth. She is also a cheerleader. She experienced her first year as a Wattsworth cheerleader this, this past football season. She enjoyed it. She had a great time. It was not only an adjustment for her, being a high school student, but also being a cheerleader. My daughter's a competition cheerleader, but sideline cheering was a whole new thing to her. Peggy kind of took her under her wing and guided her, helped her, as she does all of the cheerleaders. She's very caring, very, I guess, nurturing. She is fair with every single cheerleader. There is no special treatment giving, given to any single person. I felt that my daughter, when she was in the company of Peggy, she was safe, whether it was away games or here at Wattsworth. It's just, I'm very upset. My daughter is upset. It's a very sudden thing. You know, we had hopes of trying out again, you know, for 10th grade. That's up in the air right now. You know, being a cheerleader is a sport and does require athletic ability. We do want to make sure that whoever is hired, if we can't get Peggy back, that they are able to do the job as well as Peggy does for the safety of our kids. You know, they're doing jumps, they're doing, you know, all, all kinds of things, and, you know, safety of the, the athletes is, is a concern. I'm also, you know, just really baffled at how things were just kind of so sudden. And again, I'll reiterate, we have no answers. We have zero. I think I emailed every single one of you on the board. I, I, I just feel so strongly about this that I had to reach out. And I'm, I know that I got the same response from pretty much everybody, that there's nothing that you can say. But I want you to know that I speak on behalf of a lot of the moms that feel the exact same way. I think that this is going to do the Wattsworth Cheer Program a huge disservice. Peggy's worked six-plus years to build this program. It's, the competition part of it is, is pretty new, and she's just helping it grow and become something that Wattsworth can be proud of. I'm heartbroken, I'm upset, and with respect, I would ask that you please reconsider terminating Peggy Galata as the Wattsworth Cheerleading Coach. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a tie, so whoever wants to go first.
Your mic name is Lisa Wapinar, and my address is 10363 Clearbrook Circle here in Wattsworth. I'm here speaking on behalf of me and my husband, Mark, and I pretty much am here also as an advocate for my daughter, who was also a freshman cheerleader. My daughter breathes cheer, and she has been a cheerleader since she was six years old. She coaches WYF Cheer. She, she's on competitive cheer teams, and cheer is her life. And Peggy has just been nothing but amazing towards her, and having a daughter on a medical 504 and having medical issues, I really felt the comfort with Peggy, Peggy and the safety of my daughter cheering and lifting and tumbling under her and even going away to camps, knowing that my daughter would always be safe, and Peggy always had the best interests and the girls at heart. My daughter was part of the cheer team as well through football cheer, and like, everything there as far as, she had an amazing experience. She really enjoyed the cheer. She really enjoyed the coaches. And I'm kind of here asking the same questions because I was not comfortable knowing that there wasn't a, a meeting for the parents of understanding with our girls what was going to happen with the cheer team, and they came out of school, and there was actually quite a few of them. And I know that this was an email that was, that I sent along as well, as far as there was quite a few of them that were just crying and upset and scared because this is my daughter's only avenue, and she has goals of getting a scholarship someday through competitive cheer that Peggy has started out, because that's Peggy's goal with these girls, is to get them to college cheer and athletic scholarships because it is an athletic sport. And they are just very upset, and they're very worried, as well as many of us parents are, because they don't know what the next step is going to be, and we're concerned, and we hope that when you are finding a new coach, if you do not listen to our plea as far as allowing Peggy Galata to come back, is to look for someone who looks at our girls' best interests in their safeties, as, as far as with cheer, being a very competitive sport with tumbling and lifts and has the knowledge that, that needs to be had to make sure that our girls stay safe in both realms of not just sideline cheering and chants on the football field, but as far as the tumbling and the lifts and all those type of things. So pretty much, I'm here for the same answers. I would just, questions to be answered because we don't know what happened, and our girls, and many of us parents as well, just want to know what is going to continue because we have tryouts for the next season already in the next couple of weeks, and Peggy has been already working with our girls tirelessly for these tryouts and prepare them. So everyone, as it on end, is very concerned about what the rest of their high school career is going to look like as far as cheer goes and how this looks as far as most of them are looking for college, you know, college scholarships for cheer and, and to continue these, to be an athlete as well. Another thing really quick that I started to mention was, my husband and I were not really happy as far as allowing a meeting today with just our girls in the school, but there wasn't a meeting that parents could be involved with for us to sit with our daughter because we are very open as far as with our daughter with different types of discussions about things. And then our daughter did not feel comfortable sitting in a meeting alone without us there or her parents as far as like, what's going to happen, what's going to do, because we want to hold our daughter's hand through this and help her get through these because she also has fears of, of the unknown and how this is going to look through the next, for the rest of her high school career. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bill Mueller. My wife is Sandy Mueller, a teacher at CIS. The first thing I wanted to talk about was, just to say thank you to all of the administration, the people at CIS, especially Brandon and all of the teachers that have really reached out to Sandy through her medical issues that she's had in right now, and she's really appreciative of all the support and love that she's felt from all the teachers and administration. Also, I would like to address the cheerleading situation. Sandy and I have been involved with the school district here now for over 25 years, had kids and our grandkids, and Alyssa, our youngest, or basically our kid, is a freshman with the cheerleading squad. You've heard everybody say how much they support Peggy, and all of these parents are all supporters right now. And I've sat over there, listened to the first part of your meeting, all address money issues. Supporters support with their wallets also. It's a very fine line between a support- It's a very fine line between a supporter and a non-supporter. If you continue to work in the dark and not to let people know what your situation is as far as why you let someone go, it's going to be very easy to turn those supporters into non-supporters. If you have a good reason, I urge you to share it with us, so that we can move on. If you don't have a good reason, please consider rehiring Peggy. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for that tone going off, I had two different timers going, and I didn't use my glasses, so I apologize for that, didn't mean to be rude. Yes ma'am.
Would you like my address, I forgot to give you the address.
You're fine. He's got it.
Good evening, Melissa Triplett, 208 Hillside Drive, Wadsworth, Ohio. Definitely here in support of cheerleading, I don't know Coach Peggy, I have a daughter, an eighth-grade cheerleader, and she came up through the Wadsworth Youth Cheer System, we loved it. She went into competitive cheer for a couple of years, needed a break from it, you know, back in cheering for school. I will say that beyond the cheering and the coaching, from what I understood, is that Ms. Peggy created a way for the young ladies to have education beyond high school. By the Competitive Cheer Program that she created, scholarships were available for, I shake too, scholarships were available for those young ladies to attend post-secondary education beyond high school. I will tell you that education is probably the heart of who I am. I've worked at a college, a regional branch campus, at Wayne College for 17 years. I currently work for the state of Ohio with the GI Bill. I approve schools, facilities throughout the state for veterans to use their GI Bill benefits. Education is who I am. And what that young lady, Ms. Peggy, did to create those scholarships, is at the heart of your mission that's on your website, and I would love to see her continue to make those opportunities for those young ladies. So that's all I have to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else?
Can I say?
Um, it, yes, go ahead. We're adjusting the roll a little bit, but that's okay, go ahead.
Janine Antolcheck, again, I just wanted to reiterate a little bit of what was just said. We do think, are thinking the future of our daughters as far as getting scholarships and whatnot. It's not just a sport, it's not just, these aren't just cheerleaders, they are athletes who work and train, and, you know, blood, sweat, and tears for the sport, and they enjoy it. And my daughter as well, is, she's a competitive cheerleader at a private gym, and then again, a cheerleader for Wadsworth. It's her life, and so she plans on going to college and trying to get scholarships and whatnot. So, I don't know how much support that Wadsworth really gives, the cheer teams, like, we're sort of new with this, but we're thinking long-term, and we're thinking of our kids' future as well. And, the way I see it, Peggy is the one that can get this done and continue to, you know, help our daughters thrive through their chosen sport. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that we haven't heard from yet? Okay, Dr. Hill, if I may for a moment, and then we can go from there. First of all, I appreciate all of you coming tonight, definitely hear the passion in your voice and support for your students, I think all of us up here understand that, because we're all parents too. So, and thank you for the decorum and the way that you came out tonight, we just really appreciate that. I will say that, you know, because it is personnel matter, you know, we can't lay it all out to you legally, we're just not permitted to do that, which unfortunately can lead to rumors and other things that just simply aren't true. When it comes to supplemental contracts as well, as you know, they're one-year, and then if something's determined not to be renewed, it's not even an issue that the board, you know, that the board votes on. I can say that, and anybody else up here can certainly chime in, but the administration that's been involved in these matters, you know, trust the process. I don't think I've heard anything, as we reviewed this, that gives me concern that that wasn't followed. And, I would also say that all of us are supportive and want to make sure that every program, whether it's cheerleading, girls tennis, you know, winter guard, whatever those are, we're committed to making those as best that we can, so we are looking as well to the future. I get scholarships, I understand that, the more money that you can get for scholarships, the less that has to come out of your pocket or other things, and we want to do everything that we can to facilitate that. And I'm definitely confident, and I'll let anyone else jump in that wants to, but we want to make sure that that program continues to grow and strengthen, and that you can all continue to support what's going on. So, I just open it to any of the board members for any other response.
Another response, but I think Competitive Cheer was the last sport that we approved as a board unanimously. It's the most recent sport we approved, so we're fully supportive.
No, I mean, I think you've stated. Okay.
Tim?
Okay.
So just, probably two comments, outside of appreciation for taking time to share thoughts.
The first is, we are committed, Dr. Suber, Mr. Campbell, our Athletic Director, the others, myself, who will be involved in the process, are committed to continuing to have a top-notch experience with offerings for the girls, for cheerleading, including the Competitive Cheer Team. We have some things that we need to work through with timing, but our commitment, I think, matches what I'm hearing you suggest is what the girls deserve, we agree. I want to echo what President Gordon said for a moment. Personnel situations are difficult, because we're not permitted to be able to just lay things out. For most things, we can lay out all kinds of facts, that's why the board agenda's 348 pages for tonight. We can give all the facts, and people can draw their own conclusions of whether they support or disagree with recommendations, we can't do that with personnel. What I can tell you is that when we're dealing with personnel situations, our process always involves that person that's the topic or the subject of whatever it is that's happening. And usually, there's more than one, many times multiple, interactions, conversations, other things that have occurred. So while we can't speak to a personnel decision and what the reasons are behind it, I can assure you that I haven't been part of any personnel decision here, or in other districts that I've worked in, either in this role or other roles, where the person that's been impacted by that didn't fully understand whether they agreed with it or not, didn't fully understand why the decision was being made. And so then, you know, so, again, when we can't put facts out there, then facts, then people speculate other things, I understand that, and that's a limitation of what we're able to work with. But we are committed to doing right by the girls, and making sure that the program continues to build on the past successes that it has had, and hopefully open doors and opportunities for the kids that are part of the program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close public participation and move on to administrative items.
Tonight, under Personnel Consent Items, have items 1 through 4 for your consideration. In regards to the addendum that came out earlier today, there were a few personnel items that are being added. So on 1B, non-teaching employees, we added Amelia Thomas and James Attican. On 1G, supplemental contracts, we added Pam Chalky, Cheryl Gerbrick, and Kim Hake. And on 1H, volunteers, we added Tina Marks. I think all of the items are pretty straightforward, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I do want to, while not part of this section, while we're dealing with personnel, skip ahead to the item, one of the items you'll consider later, and just thank Greg Wise and Tony Indovia for their work for us. Mary Agostinovich is on there as well, but we spoke about her at a previous meeting, we're just adjusting the date. And we thank them for their service to our district. So at this time, I recommend to you Personnel Consent Items 1 through 4, with the stated addendum items that came out earlier today.
Okay, thank you, may I get a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, Mr. Beeman.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Next, at the Action Consent Items, there are 31 for your consideration this evening. On the addendum that came out today, we added G to item number 2, a first reading for Board of Education Policies. The policy added for the first reading was 6200 general fund cash reserve policy. Couple notes on the other items that are in front of you for consideration. Item 5, we want to thank the Medina Hospital Medical Staff and Cleveland Clinic, and the Medina County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 204 for their donations to our school district. Items 9 through 13 and 26 deal with the social studies textbook adoption that you heard from the committee about last month at our meeting. With your approval tonight, we'll be able to work on officially ordering most of the items. There was a footnote with Cengage that we're still working through with legal counsel on terms and conditions. But also, it'll allow Mr. Jackson and his team to align professional development that needs to happen before the current school year ends, in anticipation for next school year. And then item 25, just wanted to note, when we reduce hours due to calamity days from the previous calendar that you've approved for the school year, they have to bring back a recommendation to you to reduce those instructional hours. So you'll see in that item, and then on the details sheet, a lot more detail of how that stuff is calculated, what counts in an instruction hour at the state level. The reduction for, it was three calamity days for all buildings, the middle school had a fourth, and the high school had a fourth. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, I'm recommending for your approval, Action Consent Items 1 through 31, with that addendum 2G.
So moved.
Second. I did have a question. Now I can go for it. With respect to the textbooks, do we have a total yet?
Yeah, we do, we do have a total, we were, so was the budget 650, Eric, and we were around 550?
About 530.
530. We do still have some instruction, I apologize, I meant to actually include that in the update I sent you Friday. We are below budget, but we still have some intervention materials, correct? The state has a new intervention material list, that we have to be using materials that are on that list, like we did with English Language Arts this school year. Instructional materials are for next year, so Eric and his team are still working through that. But our belief is that that budget that we have, that we're working within, will be well within, is that correct? So when we have a final on all of that, I will definitely share the numbers, so you can see where we ended up in relation to what was budgeted.
Good answer, Mr. Jackson.
Eric, you've done a nice job working through all of this.
Yeah, and if we can get an update when you get it next month, that would be great.
I'll make sure we do.
So, okay. Because Tim's an overachiever, we already have a motion in a second, so we can do, roll call, Mr. Beeman.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, items of the treasurer, Doug.
My only item tonight is your monthly financial reports for the month of March.
Okay, slacking this month, are we? Okay, can I get a motion in a second, please? So, second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Doug.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Legislative update, Tim?
I'll be brief, we've heard enough about our legislator and legislators and all that are working on Columbus, but there are still a lot of bills that are under consideration. One that is worth mentioning is the School Bus Safety Act, which I think will be approved very shortly, I would imagine. And that's just an allocation of funds to create school buses and make them more safe. So, I think we would all be in favor of that. And, just as a follow-up to the stuff that Doug was sharing earlier, first of all, Mr. Beeman, I thank you for the very detailed presentation, this is very confusing, and I'm just glad we have someone that we can go to for questions, so we thank you for that. I would also just encourage members of our community, if they would like, to reach out to our state senator, Mark Romanchuk, we are District 22, you can find his information on the state website. The president of the senate is Rob McCauley, the Speaker of the House is Matt Huffman, Governor DeWine, I think if we would contact any of those individuals and let them know what we think, what we value, I certainly would encourage you to do that, so, that's all I have for today.
Thank you. You picked a great time to be legislative liaison, I tell you. Okay, moving on to board member items, we have a couple of things first on the agenda, and then we'll open it up to the individuals. So the first one is in 11A, Radification of Resignations 1 through 3. So if I could get a motion in a second for that, those I guess I should say? So moved. Second. Okay, roll call, Mr. Beeman.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have item 11B, Employment Contract, enlisted number one there, motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Beeman.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, so the balance of the time for the board member items, Connor, we'll go with you first. Because you do the best and you're most entertaining, so go for it.
I try to be, I appreciate it. So, to start out with a couple of things that have been going on and are going to be going on around the school, we can look to how right now, we're actually in the midst of another School Council ran Spirit Week. It'll culminate in our Spring Pep Rally this upcoming Thursday on the 17th. It's a lot of fun, we have a couple of spirit-themed days, we'll leave the day with shoes, or socks and sandals day, and look forward to the pep rally just later in the week. And, a little bit less fun than that for students who have to take them. EOC testing has already begun, and will continue to be going on throughout the month of April. And, for students who do not have these tests, we have delayed starts, so both parents and students watch out as Wednesday, April 16th, on the 23rd and 24th and 30th of April, we will all have delayed starts for students who will not be taking those tests, so just keep note of that. Also on the 26th, the Wadsworth High School Junior Banquet will be held at the Galaxy, this will be from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. And tickets will be $45 and can be purchased from the weekly email that Dr. Suber sent out earlier in the week. That's a lot of fun, I went to it last year and enjoyed every second of it. I went to it last year and enjoyed every second of it. And then, once we get to May, again, not quite as fun, but any and all AP students will have their exams. These will start on May the 5th and run all the way through the 16th. All students, please be aware of when and where your test is. And then, coming up just as quickly as those AP tests, we have the Wadsworth High School Prom, which will be hosted at the Galaxy with tickets open to all seniors in good standing and their approved guests. And the after prom will be hosted on the same night, and tickets will also need to be purchased as well. They're two separate things, and it will be held at the Foundry in Medina from 11:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. And again, those tickets can be purchased from the email that Dr. Super sent out just earlier in the week. And then finally, looking around the school, the Wadsworth High School Scholarship Night will be hosted in here in the pack on May 15th. Seniors, please be on the lookout for more information. It will be coming out soon. So now we can shift over to the fine arts, and I'm very happy to congratulate our speech and debate team, who, as our season came to a close, we ended it fairly strong. We hosted our Congressional National Qualifying Tournament here at Wadsworth this year, and we actually won the whole thing. And we also qualified two students to the national tournament in June. Reese McQuade, who placed fifth in the House, will be going to Des Moines along with me, who placed second in the Senate. I'm really looking forward to going to this competition. I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to have the opportunity to do so. And then, as has already been mentioned earlier, in the board meeting, the Annual Fine Arts Festival will be held just next month, May 2nd to 3rd. The concert will be held at the high school, and the art gallery will be showcased at the middle school. And then, our choir spring concert will be held May 8th to 9th at 7:00 p.m. in the pack, and our Wadsworth High School band will be performing in their spring concert around the same time. Now, unfortunately, I don't have too much information on sports right now. We're just starting to get into our competition for our spring sports, and a lot of different competitions have been delayed due to uncertain weather. So for now, I'll just say, good luck to all of our spring sports, our students, athletes. I wish you all the best of luck in all of your competitions, and I look forward to seeing you again next month for one of my final meetings.
If you have any in with Mother Nature, please work your magic, okay? Congratulations to you, honey. Thank you. Okay, Julie?
Great. Congratulations to you and to the speech and debate team. I just, I guess, wanted to highlight, there's a lot of things, I love the collaboration that we do have here in the district and with the Four Cities Compact collaborating with all of the elementary school buildings to bring the fourth graders a career fair, and the students got to rotate through all of the compact programs that we have, and they, you know, got to experience those programs. And then, I loved too that the students, the older students, were working with the younger students and talking to them and being patient with them and asking their questions. And so I just thought that that's a great opportunity, and it's, again, was kind of repeated for the second graders, and they received a career lesson from the Teachers' Academy, and they got a free book. And the teachers got to work, or the teaching students got to work with the second grade students. So I thought that that was, you know, just a fabulous opportunity for collaboration. And I do know, I just wanted to touch too on the middle school and their newsletter, that they are looking for seventh graders and up-to-be safety town teen volunteers. And so, it was a wonderful opportunity, and my children did that, and it's a great opportunity to work, again, to, with the younger kiddos just entering our district. So, middle school parents and up, please look for that opportunity for your kids. That's all I have.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, in light of all the state testing this week, just hoping our kids can keep their anxiety at bay and just do their best, their best work this week. I did see that the girls across, senior night is Thursday at Art Right, 7:00 p.m. One exciting thing that happened at Lincoln Elementary recently is they received a $10,000 grant from Home Depot for their outdoor science centers. So it's going to be an exciting thing for them as they will begin to explore new ways of learning about science. So we're excited that they got that. And as far as anything else, just, we're in the home stretch of the school year, so teachers, administrators, parents, students, to hang in there. You'll get through it, one day at a time, one hour at a time, but just, you got this, so let's keep going.
Thank you. Okay, Jill?
Thanks, Amanda. I actually first would like to thank our public participants, because we don't take for granted the involvement and the fortunate we are to have people that are passionate about our community and our schools. So not every district has that. So regardless of being nervous or not, thank you for showing up to a board meeting. And also, I'd like to congratulate our Students of the Month and thank our principals again for continuing to do that. That's probably always going to be my favorite part of the meeting, especially since Connor gives out the certificates, and thank you. And congratulations to Connor. I think that's a round of applause. Absolutely. Going to state sounds like an awesome way to end your high school career, so congratulations on that. Couple things I noted over the last month. Congratulations to Nadia Hill, who won Best of Show in the Medina County Art League Senior Portfolio Show. We have a state champion in our middle school for Jacob Mount in a track and field championship, so the future looks bright. And our bowling team, who had a wonderful, successful year, both of our coaches, Heidi Steele and George Steele, were both Bowling Coaches of the Year, which is very impressive as well. We might have mentioned our winter guard, but they were also state champions as well, so really good spring already. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just a couple of observations, and one of them has to do with Students of the Month at the beginning, and I couldn't help but notice tonight when a couple of our kids were up here and they made reference to Coach Booth and Dana Hire, who made the comments about the students. And you see the expression on the kids' faces, and it's just another reminder of the connection that our kids have and cultivate with our teachers, coaches, and whatnot. So, and then you see some of the younger kids, the elementary kids, and, you know, their fondest memory is their second grade teacher, and you just see their faces light up, and it's just, again, just a reminder of what a wonderful group that we have here and those connections to the kids. So I just noticed that tonight with Andy and with Dana, so I just wanted to bring that up as well. So that's all I have, because you guys covered everything else, and I'll just say ditto to everything else you said. So we're going to adjourn into executive session, and the reasons for that are listed as A2, which is employment. Give me for flipping the page. E, matters to be kept confidential by federal law, rules are state statutes, so it's A2 and E. So if I can get a motion in a second to move into executive session? So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Doug.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Thank you.